Find the least value of, first question. Find the least value of x minus 1, x minus 3, x minus 4, x minus 6 plus 10. Before we solve the problem, every time first we will discuss the concept. Concept. If there is a quadratic expression, ax square plus bx plus c. Ax square plus bx plus c. So, there are two types. Type 1, where the coefficient of x square is greater than 0. Type 2, where coefficient of x square a is less than 0. In type 1, there are three cases depending on discriminant value. Discriminant can be greater than 0. Discriminant can be equal and to 0. Discriminant can be less than 0. D greater than 0, d equal and to 0, d less than 0. Discriminant equal and to 0. That means the roots are real and equal. Because it's a quadratic expression, there will be 2 roots, alpha and beta. Both are equal, so the graph will go upwards. This is the graph for discriminant equal and to 0. D greater than 0. D greater than 0 means they are real and unequal. This is the graph for d greater than 0. D less than 0. Discriminant less than 0. That means that the roots are imaginary. Imaginary roots will never touch the x axis, so it will go little above. So, this will be d greater than 0, d equal and to 0, and d less than 0. One important key point, more than solving this question, he could ask you a minimum value or a maximum value for any polynomial expression. It's extremely important for you to know. Now, in this quadrant, xe is positive, ye is positive. That means a quadratic expression, ax square plus bx plus c greater than 0. That entire ax square plus bx plus c, that is called as y. Ye is greater than 0, only when ae is greater than 0 and discriminant is less than 0. Ax square plus bx plus c. A quadratic expression will always be positive. If he says on what value the quadratic expression will be positive, you should say that when the coefficient of x square is greater than 0 and the discriminant is less than 0. Only if that these two conditions are satisfied, then the quadratic expression is said to be greater than 0. If the graph is touching the axis only at one point, that means discriminant equal and to 0. If the graph is touching the axis at 2 points, d is greater than 0. Now, if you see in type 1, a greater than 0, the graph is going upwards. That means I can determine the, I can determine the minimum value. I can determine the minimum value. Please write down in your notes. Ax square plus bx plus c. Ax square plus bx plus c. Ae is greater than 0. Let me call it as y. That means y will have minimum value. Y will have minimum value. At x minimum value, x minimum value is nothing but minus b by 2a. If I substitute minus b by 2a, I will get minus d by 4a for y minimum value. X minimum value will be minus b by 2a, y minimum value will be minus d by 4a. What is a discriminant? Discriminant is defined as b square minus 4ac. What is important to me is this one. Can I write it as 1 by 2 into minus b by a? Minus b by a is nothing but alpha plus beta. Some of the roots is nothing but alpha plus beta, right by 2. X minimum will be at alpha plus beta by 2. Once you got x minimum value, substitute wherever x is there, that value, you will get the y minimum value. You will get the y minimum value. I hope the idea it is clear. Suppose if the example, first little example. X minus 3 into x minus 7. X minus 3 into x minus 7. We want the y minimum value and we want x minimum value. Y minimum value and x minimum value. There are multiple ways to solve it. D is nothing but x square minus 10x plus 21. D is nothing but x minus 5 whole square. X square minus 10x plus 25 and it is minus 4. And it is minus 4. D is nothing but minus 4 plus x minus 5 whole square. X minus 5 whole square is, x square minus 10x plus 25. 25 minus 4 is 21. D's square function is always greater than 0. So, y minimum will be minus 4 and x minimum will be minus 4. If it is equal and to 0, d is 5. This is how most of the students will solve this problem. Y minimum is minus 4, x minimum will be 5. X square minus 10x plus 21 is minus 4 plus x minus 5 whole square. This will be y minimum and this x minus 5 whole square will be 0. That means at x equal and to 5. At x equal and to 5, x minus 5 whole square will be equal and to 0. So, y minimum is minus 4 at x equal and to 5. This is one way to do it. Another way, y is nothing but x minus 3 into x minus 7. Just now we discussed, we can do y minimum at x minimum. What is x minimum, which is nothing but alpha plus beta by 2? Alpha is 3, beta is 7. 3 plus 7 by 2, 10 by 2, it is 5. X minimum, it is 5. Wherever x is there, substitute 5. 5 minus 3 into 5 minus 7. So, 2 into minus 2. What will be the answer for this question? Answer for this question is nothing but minus 4. I hope you understood how you can use alpha plus beta by 2. Suppose if the question is x minus 7 into x minus 23. Directly you can write, y minimum is at x minimum. X minimum is alpha plus beta by 2. 23 plus 7, 30. 30 by 2, which is nothing but 15. So, 15 minus 7 and 15 minus 23. Minus 64 and 80, 50. Just to give an idea, instead of using minus b by 2a, minus b by a is alpha plus beta, so you can use alpha plus beta by 2. This is for a simple quadratic expression. We just discussed a case where ae is greater than 0. Let me also discuss a case. Type 2. Type 2. Ae is less than 0. Ae is less than 0. Case 1, case 2, case 3. Case 1, case 2, and case 3. So, same thing, only thing it will be inverted. D less than 0, d equal and to 0, d greater than 0. Discrimant equal and to 0, the roots are real and equal. A less than 0, the graph will be inverted. It can go to the left axis, it can be between touching third and fourth quadrant first. It can move from left to right, it can go from up and down. But this is an approximate behavior of the graph. The only thing is, it should touch the axis at 2 points. Discrimant less than 0, roots are imaginary. It will not touch the axis. D greater than, d great, d is the graph for, d is the graph for d equal and to 0. D is the graph for d greater than 0. D greater than 0 means roots are real and unequal. That is the reason 2 points I got here. D equal and to 0, it will touch at, it will touch at 1 point. So, d is the graph, so d is the graph for this, d is the graph for this. I hope the idea it is clear. Now, if you see here, entire quadrant. Now, we discussed ax square plus bx plus c greater than 0. If it is less than 0, less than 0 means plus plus minus plus minus minus plus minus. Y will be negative. When it will be negative? When ae is less than 0 and d is less than 0. D is less than 0. It's a very simple way to understand this. If, if a quadratic expression is greater than 0, a will be greater than 0. If a quadratic expression is less than 0, a will be there, less than 0. In both the cases, discriminant will be less than 0. D equal and to 0 means the roots are real and equal, only 1 point. D greater than 0 means roots are real and unequal. D less than 0, roots are imaginary. Imaginary roots can never touch the axis. These 6 graphs are extremely important from quadratic equation subtopic. A lot of tough questions can be solved very easily if you know this concept. But till now, we did only the graphs of quadratic. But if you see the question, the question is not of quadratic, it is of degree 4. So, let me see if I can optimize this question into a quadratic. Now, see here. First question. Instead of just solving the question, first we will understand the question and then we will solve it. X minus 1, x minus 3, x minus 4, x minus 6 plus 10. Take the first and fourth and the second and third. If I take the first and fourth, this will be x square minus 7x plus 6. This will be x square minus 7x plus 12 plus 10. Let me call these entire value as a. These value will be a plus 6 plus 10. I hope the idea it is clear. Now, you have got it into degree 2. Now, because it is a degree 2, d is a square plus 6ea plus 10, which is 9 plus 1. D is nothing but 1 plus a plus 3 whole square. 1 plus a plus 3 whole square. Let me call it as y. A plus 3 whole square is nothing but square. Square will always be positive. So, what is the minimum value for these expression of degree 4? Y minimum is nothing but 1. Y minimum, it is nothing but 1. X minus 1 into x minus 6, x square minus 7x plus 6. So, in case, see, in a quadratic expression, d by dx is the slope. D by dx is the slope. D square by dx square, it is the slope of the slope of the curve. That will help us to determine whether it is a quadratic, whether there is a maximum value or a minimum value for the expression. I will not use a differentiation right now, I'll go with a simple non-mathematical understanding. First problem, I hope it is clear and the knowledge behind the first problem also, I think it should be clear. Second one, very good question, it is almost 99 percentage of the students will do a mistake. Let us see what is the mistake. So, what they will do is, in hurry, they will do this mistake. Root of x plus 1 minus root of x minus 1 equal and to root of 4x minus 1. Square, squaring on both the sides. Squaring on both the sides. A minus b whole square. A square plus b square minus 2ab. 2 root of x square minus 1 equal and to 4x minus 1. Minus 1 plus 1 cancel. 2x goes to the right side. Minus 2 root of x square minus 1 is 2x minus 1. Most of them will sound like this, squaring it. 4 into x square minus 1 is 4x square minus 4x plus 1. 4x square, 4x square cancel. Minus 4 equal and to minus 4x plus 1. Minus 5 equal and to minus 4x. So, they will tick mark. X equal and to 5 by 4. X equal and to 5 by 4 is what we got by solving and squaring on both the sides. Immediately, they will tick mark 1. But there is a catch here. What will do is, we got the answer 5 by 4 right, so what will do is, we will cross-check whether it is left hand side is equal and to right hand side. It is root of 4 into 5 by 4 minus 1. Root 4, it is 2. These root of 9 by 4 minus root of 1 by 4. 3 by 2 minus 1 by 2. 2 by 2, it is 1. Is 1 equal and to 2? 1 equal and to 2 is semantic mistake. 1 cannot be equal and to 2. Even though you got the answer 5 by 4, a solution means LHS should match with RHS. Solution means 2 curves intersect together. If the intersection is on the axis, then it is called a root. If the intersection is somewhere, suppose the curve is like this and the curve is like this. These are all the points of intersection. If the intersection is on the x axis, then the solution becomes a root. Otherwise, solution, the definition of solution is the point of intersection of 2 curves. If the 2 curves intersect together, then it is called a solution. LHS is, should be equal and to RHS. But here, LHS is not equal and to RHS. Almost everybody will get the answer 5 by 4. But they forget to check whether LHS is equal and to RHS. That is the basic definition of solution. So, root 1 equal and to 2, it is not satisfying. Even though 5 by 4 is the answer we got. 5 by 4 is not satisfying left hand side equated with right hand side. So, answer for this question is, there are no solutions for this equation. Please put a star mark on this question. Each and every question is carefully selected, carefully understood. What can be the trap an examiner can give it? You might think that it is an easy question. But once you come out of the examination hall, you will lose marks because you have not understood the concept in detail. Conceptual clarity is the key to maximize your chances with a great written score percentile. So, please write down in your notes, what do you mean by notes? Solution? Solution is left hand side equal and to right hand side. Root is, if I substitute root, it should be equal and to 0. This is the difference between solution and the root. This is the difference between solution and the root. Suppose if there is a curve like this. Assume there is a curve like this. Let me draw another curve. Suppose if a curve is like this. If a curve is like this. Now, see here, totally how many point of intersection are there? These 1 point of intersection, 2 points of intersection, 3rd point of intersection, 4th point of intersection, 5th point of intersection. There are 5 point of intersections are there. There are 5 point of intersections are there. But how many roots are there? Root is the point which makes y equal and to 0. Any point which makes y equal and to 0, it should be on the x axis. These are root. These are root. How many roots are there? 2 roots are there. 2 roots are there. Please make a note of it. Is root, is root a solution? Definitely yes. Are solutions, total how many solutions are there? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. There are 5 solutions are there. How many roots are there? There are 2 roots are there. Very important point, please write down in your notebook. A root means after substituting the value in the expression, it should result me 0. It should result in a 0. What do you mean by a solution? Solution is, left hand side should be equated with right hand side. Solution is nothing but the point of intersection of 2 curves. That point of intersection which makes y equal and to 0 is called a root. Y equal and to 0 is called a root. Another good question, third question. This is also another question. Minus 2 by x minus 1, minus 2 by x minus 1. They will, we can cancel it, x equal and to 1. There is a good chance that you might probably take it as 1 root. But x equal and to 1, the domain of 2 by x minus 1 is, x cannot take value 1. After cancelling, you are telling that x equal and to 1. But x equal and to 1 will not satisfy the equation. So, answer for this question is no root. Answer for this question is no root. I hope the idea it is clear. I hope the idea it is clear. Now, xy plus yz plus zx equal and to 0. This is a cat replica question. You can solve the problem in multiple methods. Method number 1. Method number 1. Now, if you see here, d is nothing but the sum of the roots taken 2 at a time. Zx equal and to 0. Can I say that this is equal and to 1 by x plus 1 by y plus 1 by z equal and to 0? Xyzz LCM. Yz plus zx plus xy equal and to 0. I hope it is clear. If the sum of the roots taken 2 at a time, it is 0. It is also equal and to the sum of the reciprocal of the roots. Method 1. So, what you can do is, xy plus yz, question zx equal and to 0. If you observe closely, question contains variables. Answer contains numerical values. Again, I am repeating. Question contains variables. Answer contains numerical values. I can also use a substitution method. I will tell you as a method 2. So, yz, yzd is nothing but minus of xy plus zx. zx is nothing but minus of xy plus yz. Xy is nothing but minus of yz plus zx. Wherever it is there, if I substitute it, 1 by x square minus into minus plus, plus xy plus zx. Plus 1 by minus zx is y square plus xy plus yz. Plus 1 by z square minus xy is yz plus zx. Now, if you observe carefully, next step is nothing but the answer. Xe is common here. 1 by x into x plus y plus z. Again, in the second term, ye is common. Y into x plus y plus z. Third step, again zd is common. Z into x plus y plus z. If I take 1 by x plus y plus z, so bracket it will be 1 by x plus 1 by y plus 1 by z. 1 by x. If xy plus yz plus zx equal and to 0, that means 1 by x plus 1 by y plus 1 by z, it should be 0. 0 into anything, 0. This is a traditional method. Many of you probably in our school days and the college days, this is the method which is taught to me. Which is right. So, question xy plus yz plus zx equal and to 0. Wherever yz is there, I substituted the remaining 2. Wherever zx is there, I substituted remaining 2. Wherever xy is there, I substituted remaining 2. This is the traditional method. Now, please write down sir. If the question contains variables. If the question contains variables. If the answer options, if the answer options also contains variables. If the answer options also contains variables. Or if the answer options also contains numerical values. The best method that can be used is plug the values, plug the variables with values. Take some values which will satisfy the equation and plug it in the question. Please make a note of this important key point. If the question contains variables. If the answer options contains variables or numerical values, replace the variable, variables with some dummy numerical values. Replace the variables with dummy numerical values. I hope it is clear. 1 minute sir. Praveen? Camera. Sir, which all values we should take? Only plug in if the question contains variables and the answer options contains variables or numerical values. Now, see here. Xy plus yz plus zx equal and to 0. If I take x 0, 0, 0, yz 0, y and z will be 0. Denominator 0, it cannot be. So, xyz cannot take 0. Why? Because xyz are there in the denominator. Let me take x value 1. It will become y. Next, it will become yz. Next, it will become z equal and to 0. Net, it will be 0. Let me take y value 1. It will become 1 plus 2z equal and to 0. 2z equal and to minus 1. zd is nothing but minus 1 by 2. So, 1, 1 minus 1 by 2. Avoid fractions, multiply by 2. 2, 2 minus 1. So, wherever xe is there, substitute 2. Wherever ye is there, substitute 2. Wherever zd is there, substitute minus 1. So, if I substitute 1 by x square for minus yz, it is 4 plus 2. So, again, 1 by y square, 4 plus 2. Again, 1 by 4 plus 2. 1 by 6, 1 by 6 plus, again, z square, sorry, z square it will be 1 minus xy. It is minus 4, minus 4. So, 1 by 6 plus 1 by 6. 2 by 6, 1 by 3. 2 by 6, 1 by 3 minus 1 by 3. It is nothing but 0. Answer for this question is nothing but 0. How to put, plug in the variables? Please do not take xyz 0 if they are there in the denominator. Start with x value 1, then put y value 1. You got z value minus 1 by 2. 1, 1 minus 1 by 2, multiply by 2. 2, 2 minus 1. Substitute it, you will get the answer. Very easy question. But the learning from this question is, if the question contains variables and the answer option contains numerical values, use the concept of plugging in the variables. Third one. Next one. The question is mod of a square minus 8a plus 9. It is greater than mod of a square minus 8a plus 9. Mod of a square minus 8a plus 9. Now, 1 minute sir. So, this is nothing but, remove these modulus here. We will remove this modulus here. Otherwise, the question remains the same. These not there. These modulus, it is not there. So, if it is not there, let me write down again. The question is, these modulus, it is not there. So, suppose mod of minus 2. It is greater than minus 2. Mod of minus 2. Modulus is nothing but a distance from a given point. So, d is nothing but 2 is greater than minus 2. So, answer is yes. So, when it will be, suppose mod of 2. Mod of 2, it is greater than 2. Mod of 2 is it? Mod of 2 is 2. Is 2 greater than 2? No. I am getting the case yes here. When am I getting the case yes? The value that is present, it is nothing but less than 0. Please write down sir. Mod x is greater than x. Mod x is greater than x. Only when x is less than 0. Very, very important note. Mod x is greater than x. Mod of minus 2. Modulus is nothing but a distance from a given point. From 0 to minus 2, the distance is nothing but 2. 2 is greater than minus 2. Mod 2 greater than 2. Mod 2 is nothing but 2. Is, 2 is greater than 2. It is no. So, if it is mod x greater than x, that means x is less than 0. X less than 0, it is nothing but a square minus 8a plus 9 less than 0. So, d is nothing but a square minus 9a. A square minus 8a. So, 1 9s are 9. So, minus 9 into 1. You put it as, 1 minute sir. D is nothing but a square minus 8a plus 9 less than 0, less than 0. Now, what we will do is, let me Now what we'll do is, let me put it as ten. Why to factorize for this number? This is nothing but a minus one. I am making it little easy sir for you. Otherwise, you have to factorize it and you have to find out. A minus one into a minus nine less than zero. Less than means a always lies between the roots. Please write down. I just changed the question. Otherwise, the factoring, a square minus eight a plus nine, that will become a square minus eight a plus one. So just check it out whether you are getting d greater than zero. Sometimes you might get into roots unnecessary complication. Idea is to just to tell you that inside value should be less than zero. So x minus alpha, x minus beta, it is less than zero. That means x lies between alpha and beta. X lies between alpha and beta. Please write down. X minus alpha into x minus beta, if it is less than zero, x always lies. So one less than a less than nine. I changed the question. So from two to eight, I will get seven values. Two to eight, I will get seven values. Very, very important point. Mod a greater than a, that means a is less than zero. Mod a greater than a, that means a is less than zero. I hope the learning from this question is extremely clear to you. Next one.